Counselor Thomas is very late.
Okay.
Counselor Farrell?
Here.
Counselor Danilak? Ask to be excused. President Panco?
Here.
Counselor Luger?
Here.
Counselor Golden?
Here.
Counselor McLong?
Here.
Counselor Yonies asked to be excused this evening. Counselor Whitney?
Here, sir.
Counselor Soltizio?
Here.
Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. Do I hear an approval for the minutes of October 23rd?
Soon.
Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor, do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you very much. Vice President Bunker, approval of payrolls and invoices.
Madam President, I move to approve payrolls dated October 26th and November 9th in the amount of $165,680.42. Invoices total of $376,391 and $74.00.
Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. And now we have time on our agenda for public comment. So if you would like to stand and speak and either ask a question or make a comment, please state your name and your address. And I am aware that Marquito Roberts is here, so would you give us your presentation during this period of time?
Not really presentation, but you know. Okay, so back in October, we submitted a request to the borough for $700 to go towards T-shirt purchase for the students of Jenkentown for MLK Day of Service. We hosted this event back in 2016, 2015. It was very successful. We had a total of 54 students and about 30 parent volunteers. This year, we've already doubled our numbers, and so we're anticipating somewhat above 100 students to participate. We've linked up with Loews &amp; Fishes and Immaculate Conception, and so now it's going to be a community event and not just a Jenkentown School District event. And Loews &amp; Fishes serves about 100 families a week through their pantry, and so we're looking to feed about 60 to 80 families at Immaculate Conception on MLK Day of Service. The request for funding is so that we could have a unified front, and the children would wear these T-shirts that day that would be given to them. We've also reached out to local businesses to help with the need for food, and we will supply each family that participates in the event with a bag of perishable items when they go home. So the idea is that we're going to have a sign-up sheet at Loews &amp; Fishes. They've agreed to participate in this, and the families will sign up each week up until the previous Thursday before the Monday, and we'll have a head count of how many families are going to participate. We're also going to be reaching out to local organizations that house mothers and children and also other needy families, inviting them to come and also participate. The children are eager to assist these families. I think it's an eye-opener for a lot of them because they think that, you know, we live in this small town, and they don't really see the need. And then they volunteer at Loews &amp; Fishes, and they see hundreds of families come through there in need of extra food to supply food to their families, and so that was my request.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Roberts?
I have one question. Is it small about the school district?
It's not.
Okay.
So it's just the community. Initially, last, well, when we did it the first year, it was a school event, not really, but the school was supporting us, Home and School supported us. This year, because Immaculate Conception had been doing something with their families, they wanted to team up with us to make it a, you know, community event, so it's not just closed to the high school students. However, the high school students will be getting community service hours with us. But we will have a lot more families involved. I think that was the hardest part. We couldn't open it up to the whole school because we didn't have a lot of volunteers. And this year, we seem to have faculty and staff willing to come and support the event on that day.
Okay, thank you. And so the request is being made for a financial commitment from counsel.
You said there are other organizations that are contributing. Do you have us, do you give us a sense for the, how much you're getting?
So we're not necessarily getting money, but more so items to provide the meal. So Wawa has agreed to contribute like 200 juices. Whole Foods, we submitted a request. We don't really know. Based off of what we received last year, it was more like gift codes because we do like donations, so we'll do like raffles for the family, maybe like the first family to arrive or something, just to get everybody engaged. The local businesses donated like gift cards, and some of them donated food, some of them donated desserts. So it was a lot of different stuff like that, not necessarily a financial contribution. Some businesses did, but the largest contribution that we got in 2015 was from Home and School, and that was $100. This year, they are willing to double their contribution, so we're going to get $200 from them. And also, Immaculate Conception, the funds that they would have used for their event, and since we're now partnering up, they're going to give us $200 as well.
Any other questions or comments? Wouldn't you need a decision back? Would you only want to extract this?
I was hoping yes, because we submitted this request back in the beginning of October, and in order to order these T-shirts, we did a poll of three different vendors, and actually, the vendor that is going to do the T-shirts is local Jenkentown resident as well, and he is on my back.
I'd like to be sure. I think we could add a resolution at the end of our order of business. Is that right?
Just be a motion, Madam President.
Just a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, would you like your motion to support this project?
I move to support this project. $700.
You said aye. Some support, I can choose to deny this. Okay. Any other questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor with a second.
Madam President, because it was not on the agenda yet, to see if there's any other public comment on this case.
Okay. All right. Is there any other public comment on this matter? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like you've done this vote. So thank you very much for your organization of this event, and we look forward to hearing more. It'd be great, in my opinion, it would be great if it can, if the kids, the students can continue forward with it and keep their support going.
It is our goal to do it annually. The only reason that it lasts last year was because, again, we didn't have the parent support. So there were eager students, they were coming to me, and it just, you know, we had to have everybody involved in order to make the event successful.
That's great.
Let us know how we can help publicize some support.
Okay.
Will you volunteer, the mayor showing up?
Okay. So last year, yeah, the last year, when we did it in 2015, it wasn't on the Borough website, and it didn't make it to the town square. We just missed the meeting in order to request funding, so this year, I was like trying to be on top of it. My only thing is that, do you guys mind us putting the logo of the Borough on the flyer? We do that for every business that participates, as far as like donations.
I don't have an objection to it.
Yeah, maybe you can talk with George about that.
Okay.
And you just make sure we get it all the dates and the times, so that certainly less could be able to volunteer.
Excellent.
All right, thank you very much. Now we have time for any additional public comment. Yes, would you say your name and your address?
Jack and Boulter, 315 Cotman Street. Basically, our, I've been the request a delegate from Cotman Street to come speak to counsel about the parking issues going on on Cotman Street. We have resident permit parking on one side of the street. For those that don't know, we are two blocks long. We are well over the number of parking spots that we have with the residents alone, and our issue is, is that it's not being enforced. The signs are 15 feet off the ground, nobody can see them. They're mounted very improperly, and nobody pays attention to them. So we've had to go out and kind of self-enforce resident permit parking. We do live between two bars that are very busy, and the only enforcement we get is daytime. So when everybody's at work, and it's not really an issue. However, at nighttime, when the bars are full, the restaurants are full, which is wonderful for the businesses, we have nowhere to park, and we do have to pay every year for a permit. So we would like the signs adjusted properly, and we would like to see some enforcement on this, as well as there are meters on Cotman Street. We would like to know if they can be removed. Honestly, cannot be making more than $10 a month.
Okay. All right, so thank you for your comments, and typically, that kind of a problem might be taken to the public works meeting, but Chief, would you want to comment?
We'll, we'll object.
Okay, so.
It's just been, it's just been an ongoing issue that we have.
Thank you for bringing it back to our attention.
And we'll, we'll check if the signs are standard if they're compliant.
All right. Any other public comment or questions?
I have a question.
Yes. Would you state your name and address?
Christine West, 301. I'm actually here to find out an update on the business activity of 301 on the president's claim in September 20th of this year. I'm just trying to find out what's going on. I haven't heard anything.
Okay, thank you, and can you?
Sure, I'll be happy to. So Ms. Glass, Mr. Locke received your complaint. Our office has reviewed it. We have been trying to schedule a meeting with the Downs, and several of those meetings have been canceled, some by the Borough, some scheduling difficulties, but I, it will be happening soon. I have no other further update for you. But at that meeting, we intend to raise some of the documentation that was presented to Mr. Locke.
We're over too much now.
We definitely understand that, and like I said, I don't want to blame the Downs. Some of the rescheduling has been on the Borough's part, and we will get together meetings soon.
Okay, thank you. Any other, yes, sir. State your name and address.
Yes, David Alexander. I'm a resident of 417 Vernon Road, and Steve, if you feel free to stop over and Steve to visit our holiday place. I have loved living in Jenkentown for approximately 10 years. It's a wonderful community of about, I believe, of about 4,000 residents. I've just been, I've met with a lot of joy and happiness here, well, usually. And as a result of our recent election, I made it a point, that is the merrility. I made it a point of just walking around and asking people what was going on and why there appeared to be this high level of enmity, you know, which in, in an iconic, if a place like Jenkentown, I was a bit shocked. You know, I said, well, how can this be? I mean, it is, it is the independent nation of Jenkentown. So, ad entry, a number of interesting observations, and I come here spontaneously, no one has asked me to speak, and I'm speaking out of a heart, right? One observation, which I was a little bit amazed at, was that a lot of the residents who I spoke to, in a random way, wanted more of your interaction with them, right? Walking around, knocking on doors, learning exactly what is going on, walking in with the mud, in the mud, so to speak. So I didn't eat the labor that, if the mother had a phrase, if the shoe fits, put it on, you know, so you can eat, behave accordingly. Item two was the obvious issue, which I just heard about previously with this, with the issues around with the merrility election and whatever was going on, because I cannot really understand it because it seems beyond my ability and capacity to appreciate all of the issues. As one interested in the party, I would just ask you to try to resolve this and end with this schism, and to bring us in the back together as one community, and I, and I will just end with, it's in all of our interests. I am not stating who is right or wrong, but it's in everybody's interest for to have this resolved because we're all good people. So I thank you in a plowing with this old man to speak up, but it's a wonderful borough, and we love the living here, and we also love the people who are in it, and all means all. Peace.
Thank you. Appreciate your sentiment. Any other comments or questions? All right. Then we'll move on to our presentations that are scheduled. Chief, would you like to be first?
Thank you, Madam President. Ladies and gentlemen, members of board, mayor.
Do you want us to go on?
Coming up, coming up now.
Okay.
I want to just call very briefly about emergency management real quick, and just to show the board that we do have a emergency management plan, and I'm not going to keep anybody here later than 10 o'clock.
You'll have an emergency on your head.
Yeah. Can you flip up a little bit? Yeah. This is just an overview of Jenkentown Borough's emergency management plan. What is emergency management? The function of our government is specifically responsible for coordinating the community response to a major emergency. Again, what is emergency management? It's not a substitute for a physician, or police, fire, rescue, or public works, or any other response units, but a system of coordinating. In 1978, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Act became law. Every municipality had to have an emergency management plan, an emergency management coordinator, and have some kind of a functioning, what if this happens, what do we do? So it's mandatory that we have to have that. This is the emergency management, and we'll go in reverse, we'll start at the lowest level. If an emergency happens in Jenkentown Borough, we would move to the county for assistance, then the state for assistance, and if needed, to the federal government for assistance. And by, and on the reverse, orders come from the other way, from the top down as well. There's four phases of emergency management: mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Lucky for Jenkentown Borough, for members, mayor, residents, luckily, fortunate for us, we have a fire department, medical service, and emergency service teams that react quickly, respond quickly, and they're the boots on the ground for an emergency, and they know what they're doing. They're the, when something bad happens, they know what they're doing. So we're very fortunate to have fire departments that are well-trained, and EMS, sentinel armors that is well-trained, police department that's well-trained, to respond to any emergency that Jenkentown can face. Our emergency management organizational chart is mayor, Jenkentown Borough Council, emergency management coordinator, which is me, deputy coordinators, emergency management staff functions, and supporting organizations. And I must say that everybody in the administration office is involved with emergency management. The manager, the financial director, Shelby as the information, so everybody, even a elected official, everybody in the borough is involved with emergency management in some, in some form. This is the police department's organizational flow chart. Of course, it's mayor, then the chief, then lieutenant, and sergeants, and squad members, and their duties. So, go ahead, go back. This is, I'm the emergency manager coordinator. Deputy coordinator is Lieutenant Tucker, Sergeant Soltizio, and I've added Fire Marshal Kevin Lynch to our, to our team. And staff, like I said, is George Locke, Rick Ware, Shelby Sten. Why have it planned? It's very obvious, is to coordinate agency response quickly, determine magnitude, keep the public informed, rapid restoration of services, continuity of government, maintain hazard analysis, and eligibility, eligibility for financial recovery. Coordinating agencies, police, fire, EMS, public works, administration, schools, hospitals, American Red Cross, and the private sector, everybody in an emergency is involved with the emergency in some fashion. Regional coordination, this is very important. Jenkentown is a member of the Montgomery County Regional Emergency Management Team, so when there's an emergency in the borough, whether large or small, we're never by ourselves. There's support services around us, every community, that's, that word, that's a member of the, of the team, comes to our assistance. So whether the emergency is large, whether it's isolated in Jenkentown, no matter what it is, takes a phone call for help to arrive, to assist us in any way. And a good example of this is when the floods in Abington flooded the Roslyn area back in 96. It's a really good example of emergency management and mutual aid, because every member of the fire departments, all five fire departments, every available officer, police officer, EMS people, public works people in the township, were involved with the flood itself, and evacuations, and doing what they need to do to take care of the flooding itself. Supporting agencies like Jenkentown, we took care of the normal everyday police services. We answer calls for the township for calls for service, so that the emergency people were dealing with emergency, the township was still being covered with responding, with Jenkentown, Cheltenham, and other departments assisting with answering calls for service in the township. And that was, we sent, we sent four cars and four officers there to take shifts, along with Upper Marlin, Cheltenham, and rest of the emergency management crew. So that's a good example of when somebody needs help, everybody is there. If Jenkentown needed that help, they would do the same for us. Plan organizations, basic plan, narrative, and concept of operation. We have at the county's basic operating plan, which most municipalities have. Go ahead, Bill. This is a hazard analysis. We do have a high rise in the borough. We do have a railroad. We've had helicopter landings, and of course, fire, and power plants, a power plant. But there are other things that could happen. Mobilization always starts with 911, calling 911. If you think there's a problem, don't hesitate to call 911. This is unified command. Most of the incidents that we have here in Jenkentown is a unified command, because it's more than one person in charge. The guy that went last year that was running around the sewers, I don't know if you guys heard about him, was running around. He committed a verb when he was Cheltenham Township, got into the sewer system, running around in the sewers, in the borough. So Cheltenham, that was Cheltenham's incident. The command post was set up at the train station, but it was a unified command because I was also, also there, between Cheltenham and Jenkentown. Thankfully, some guy walking the dog, this man pops up out of a manhole cover, and he called us right away, but it's just another example of a unified effort. This is a typical emergency operations center. Our emergency operations center is here in this room. It's not as fancy as that. It's also extended to the police desk. And our emergency operations center is very basic. The way we have it set up is all emergency calls from residents, if the residents have an emergency, a 911 emergency, fire, medical, police, that goes to 911 automatically. Called, they're directed to call 911. We blast that out all the time. Because in, in an emergency, I think it's another slide I want to talk about, but they want to reduce all the calls to 911 to the county. So normally, we would handle the non-emergency calls from this room or the police desk if somebody calls in and just wants to report something. We would take that call here and give it to the highway department, or we would call the fire department. But if they have an emergency, a fire, or a wire down, or a tree down, they're dispatched through the county radio system, and we don't want to interrupt any emergency calls at the fire department. Most of our, most of our, most of the time when we open EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, is weather-related in this, in this area. Most of our calls and problems are weather-related in our area. If, God forbid, there's a catastrophe, a major disaster, a major building collapse, whatever, we wouldn't handle that in this room, or Cheltenham wouldn't handle that out of Cheltenham's room, or Abington wouldn't handle it out of Abington's room. That would be handled through the county's emergency operations center. We would work directly out of that unit, because it would be a wide-scale, multi-juris, multi-jurisdictional problem, not just isolated to Jenkentown. Oh, go back to that warning, please, this is very important. Public warning, emergency alert system. In any emergency in the borough, it's really very, very important to get information out to the public as quickly as possible, and give the borough, the residents as much information as we can give them, very quickly. And there's a number of ways we do that. We can do that through our website, through the Monaco Ready Alert System. So we try to get the info out quickly, and that's where the information officer comes in to play, that's where the manager comes into play, that's where the mayor comes into play. When we need messages out quickly, it needs to go out quickly, and without delay.
Sorry, there's also a service where you can sign up on your cell phone right and get text messages.
You know what, I'm going to hold that right now.
Sorry, step in here.
Because, you know, that's what I'm going to do, because people who sign up for the ready alert, if I send out a ready alert from this building, only the people who signed up for the ready alert get that message. And only the people who sign up to the Borough website for, to get information, only those people will get that message. So in a real serious emergency, we would ask the county to use what they call IPaaS. And IPaaS is an integrated public alert. And IPAS is an integrated public alert warning system. They could, the county will, if you can tap your, pin your phones, your landline, your cellphone, and everyone in the area of the emergency will get an emergency alert. If we say we want an IPAS message sent out, though, even if you didn't sign up for anything, you would get that message on your phone. And they have the technology to do that. So when a really serious emergency, that's the route we would go. For less, for minor things, or for, you know, if there's a less serious emergency in the borough, we would use our own local notification system. So we encourage that if you didn't sign up for the borough website, with a Monco ready alert, please do. That's on our last slide. We recommend that, so you do get the messages and are informed with that when something bad happens. Go ahead, Rick.
Chief, can I just interrupt for a second? I just wanted to give the context that I had asked the chief to give a brief presentation, because we do have a lot of new members of council, and it just seemed like it would be important for people to know, you know, sort of what our role is relative to if there is an emergency. That said, do you think about two more minutes would do it?
I want to flip through your logbook.
Okay.
Go ahead, Rick. Go ahead, Rick. This is just areas of responsibility, and the police know what their responsibility is, and the fire department knows what their responsibility is. Go ahead, Rick. That's it, here's my, go ahead, Rick. Go ahead, Rick. This is the hazmat unit that the county has, so if there's a hazmat situation in the borough, we get the response from the county. Support personnel from the medical, sentinel armor, Public Works, school district, code enforcement, what's sentinel code enforcement? I hear a lot of people complain about, oh my God, I have to have another inspection. They inspect me too much. Inspections are very important, and in emergency management, it's really important to have building inspections, because the fire in Westchester, the nursing home, is a prime example of poor, basically no inspections. So don't complain if you have to have a house inspection, or somebody come down and look at your roof, this is to prevent a disaster and to prevent a problem down the road. Evacuation or shelter in place, we would notify the residents, whatever the case may be, if you have to evacuate or shelter in place. Evacuation would only come into play if something really bad happened, standard press deal, and there's airborne chemicals, then we would have to find out what's being leaked, or can they shelter in place? And that's where the IPAS notification would come into play. Go ahead, Rick. Public information again, getting messages out to the residents is extremely important to do it quickly. Recovery and record keeping is mostly what the emergency management coordinator does, because I don't drive fire trucks, I don't drive police cars, I don't drive plow trucks, but whatever they need, we would make sure they have. If we need five backhoes, we would get five backhoes. If we need a septic bus, we would get a septic bus. If the fire chief says, I need 20 chainsaws, we would get the 20 chainsaws. Go ahead, Rick. Go ahead, Rick. These are supporting organizations, American Red Cross, hospitals, we keep our contact listings up to date, we're the Eastern Monco group. Go ahead, Rick. Now, snow emergencies, this is basically when we open up our EOC, because it's mostly weather related, we use this room with the police desk. The mayor normally calls for a snow emergency, in the absence of the mayor, the highest ranking member of Borough Council could call the snow emergency, and then we would have a declared snow emergency that would include where you park your cars, and then we operate our EOC from here. We notify the highway department through the EOC, not the 911. If there's an emergency, fire department and EMS is notified by 911, not through here. And we make that very clear when we put the layout out. Before any emergency, before any event, weather event, there's a briefing with the county and all the municipalities involved. We would have a briefing, theater, phone conference, on how is each municipality going to handle this event? And Janketown would say, our EOC will be open, we have X amount of Public Works people, our fire department is on standby, we have medical people on standby, and then we have periodic briefings during the course of the event. This is a emergency management chart from Abington, that we need it, we have it. Example of a serious fire, where things, response and command. Go ahead, Rick. This is, these pods are, there's four put around the county. Pottstown, Montgomery Township, Abington, and there's one in Cheltenham, I believe. And inside, there's just equipment for emergencies. This is to detect the case of a building collapse.
So Chief, thank you so much for putting together an amazing collection of slides to let us know all about your preparedness. These are great.
And I just don't want to, I want to see one more sheriff's office.
Come on, come on. It's a fair area.
We've had to call the sheriff's office several times for fire protection, and they were very responsive and really had big help to us. EOC, so we've had helicopter landings here, SWAT teams if we needed. Now, this is the Eastern Montgomery County Emergency Management Group, all these people, if Janketown Borough needed equipment, personnel, whatever it is we need, all these people and their some would respond to it. So, go ahead, we have one more slide. Keep it. Oh yeah, right there, right there, I have my glasses on. I asked you to sign up for the ready alert in the Janketown Borough, please do that.
We'll blast that out.
Blast that out, yeah.
Can we save this as a PDF and post it on the website, on the police page?
So, but I just want to close real quick, I just want to assure Mayor Foley, I want to assure this board, and I certainly want to ensure, ensure the residents, that if there's an emergency that happens in Janketown proper, it's going to be dealt with efficiently and professionally by all the folks involved, fire, police, EMS. The mission will be accomplished, and just rest assured of that, you're in good hands.
Thank you.
We feel you that way, yes.
Chief, is this, Chief, have you communicated this yet to the school district, and how's that going to work? Like, are you going to, have you already talked to them about reviewing this plan?
Well, they already have their, we have safety meetings once a month.
Okay. So they're already, they're familiar with all this?
They have our plan, and we have their plan for our school.
Oh, thank you again, I really appreciate you putting that together, and I hope council feels a little more informed about our preparedness. All right, moving on, we're going to hear a brief report from our engineer, Pinoni engineer Cal Latah, on the storm water, storm water management plan for Cedar Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm gonna, it takes probably five minutes.
I'll zoom out, absolutely.
Okay.
So thank you for the opportunity. We had submitted a complete investigation, the port of the existing flooding that currently occurs on Cedar Street, at a low point on Cedar Street. After weeks of investigations, field visits, review of existing documentations that were available at the borough by previous consultants dating back to 2012 and on, we had completed our investigation. Just a quick background, currently there is an existing pond and issue that exists on Cedar Avenue, I'll zoom in real quick on this, just for you to see.
This is the block between Summit and Washington?
That is correct, yes.
But we're part of a community.
Okay. So this is the flooding issue right now, where it occurs, at this low point. This low point actually acts as a basin. Most of the runoff that comes from a specific drainage area comes via underground piping, and it goes to this system. It surcharges at this point, because there are restrictions after we found that downstream that are preventing the runoff from discharging through the underground piping system and out to the stream in the Cheltenham area. What you see in white is existing stormwater piping that is in place right now. What you see in red is what I'm proposing to do as part of recommendation, hopefully to address the existing drainage issue. Again, as I mentioned, the report is very detailed, I'm just going to go through this real quick, it's almost like an executive summary. The existing piping, the white pipes, are taking right now a drainage area that is roughly about 18, 19 acres. Our investigation shows that the drainage area is more like 26 acres, not 19 acres. There's an additional seven acres that have not been accounted for, that come into this drainage area, and that is one of the causes for the surcharge and the slump here. And what I'm proposing to do is, after looking at the various reports that were submitted, I ran the 10-year storm on the reports that were submitted, and ran the 25-year storm. These storms are for different rain events that take place during a specific rainfall. So, again, the existing issue is at this point right here, and also we found out that there's more restrictions at this point. This system right now assumes that there's an existing downstream pipe that is 54 inches in diameter, that's taken all the underground flow into the stream. When we did our investigation, we found out there are two restrictions. One was a pipe, section of the pipe that was assumed to be 54 inches, it's only 32 by, 30 by 42 inches, and then the pipe downstream from it was not a circular pipe, 54 inches, and that it was 54 inches vertical, 35 inches horizontal. That is a cause for restriction also. We ran different scenarios on existing designs that were completed for the borough by the previous consultant, it did not work, and then we had to come up with our own version of a solution for the pond and issue that exists on Cedar Avenue. It all starts on Harbor. We had to disconnect some of the existing piping that is conveying the runoff down this white pipe, we're trying to redirect everything back towards Washington, because Washington right now, also the additional seven acres of additional drainage area that is coming in here, happens to be coming from Alder Road, and also from Washington from this side. These pipes were not taking that runoff into consideration. As part of our recommendation, we are adding storm piping down Washington, we are taking some of the runoff that is also coming from Alder Road, from up down Borough Hall, we're going to convey it down and separate it from the existing white system that goes down to Cedar. What this will do is, it will alleviate the storm runoff that is coming across Cedar Avenue down to Walnut, we're going to take it around Washington with various sized piping, some are 36 inches, others are 42 inches, and then we're going to come back down from Walnut Street, connect into this section. Now, the section that I mentioned before was 30 by 42, we are proposing to remove that section, replace it with a 54-inch to match the downstream pipe, so that all this runoff can be conveyed properly down the existing 54-inch, across Cassafine, and then into the river by Cheltenham. This is in a nutshell, a summary of what we're trying to do. We did double and triple check our information and the data that we came up with, and then we found it to be, it is, it will work, the system will safely convey the 25-year storm, which is the normal storm design for road drainage, it will safely convey it, and hopefully it will alleviate any of the flooding issues that exist on Cedar Avenue. Now, there is additional information that is needed to make sure that the downstream side is fine. We do not have the luxury of a survey, a survey has to be done, so that you know 100% that this is the system all the way into the creek. You want to make sure also there are no restrictions for the 54-inch by the creek. But considering everything is replaced, everything is fine, the system, as we recommend right now, will safely convey the runoff and hopefully alleviate any flooding issue that you have on Cedar Avenue, or Cedar Street. We need to also make sure that there are no underground utility restrictions existing in Washington that could make our job difficult to achieve. But this is the solution, like I mentioned before, you have a complete detailed report in your package. If you have any further questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those questions. We have estimated a construction cost of roughly $800,000 to possibly $900,000 to complete the whole project. We are also looking into avenues to obtain grants for the construction cost. There is DCEV, there are other avenues where we can achieve grants, maybe not one grant for the whole thing, it may be multiple, but this is what we're going to be working on, working on with the manager to achieve the grants that you need to complete this project.
Thank you for all that information. And I'm assuming that we, some of those grants take into account that this is a condition that's, you know, multi-municipal, you know, this water is not just originating in Janketown, but it's coming from, you know, above us.
That is correct, there is at least one portion of the runoff that is coming across Alder Road from Washington, that is coming from the Abington side. And yes, you are correct, there are other areas where other watersheds are contributing to this. And the mitigation grant that we're seeking through DCEV serves such purposes, and I'm pretty confident we're going to be able to get the necessary grants to complete the project. Not only do we, are we seeking the construction grants, we're also seeking grants to cover any possible additional engineering work, so that the borough is not incurring all these costs.
Thank you very much. And so I assume, Manager Locke, that this will be, you know, factored into the planning over the next, how many years?
The next couple. Yes, we've been investigating grants to cover the costs of this, Cal just said, and there is a couple avenues that we're looking at that are promising.
Any questions?
Yes. I appreciate all your work with this, and I think it's really fascinating, kind of persistent problem in that area, and we've tried over the years to fix it, and we haven't been able to, because we're really, we're not aware of the scope of what the problem is plus. So it's a major infrastructure project that we really need to undertake, so, you know, thank you for helping us connect all the dots, and we'll definitely look for grant opportunities to make this happen.
Thank you very much, yourself.
I understand, we have to figure out how to pay for it, but it's a real problem, when there's a bad storm, the water's three or four feet deep.
Yeah, we did visit the site during rain events, and we saw for ourselves what is being drained into this area, so I agree, there's a lot of runoff that comes from this area, there may have been, not looked at properly maybe, but there's a lot of runoff that comes in here. in here. It's mind-boggling when you see it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Moving on to committee reports, Vice President Bunker.
I'll take it, Madam President, this is a report in your packet. I'm especially excited to highlight, I'll leave that to seven items that we have on the order of business.
Yeah.
It's that time of year.
Yeah, it's budget season.
It's budget season.
Building and zoning revitalization, Council Carol.
I will record a few highlights. We just prior to this meeting had our public review of the 2035 comprehensive plan. That draft was put together by community members, the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and Marley Weiss presented the draft tonight to the Jenkentown Planning Commission. And it really is our community's vision, and it will be our guidance, and it has already served as guidance for council as we undertake, you know, plans going forward and priorities for the town. So the next step is that that draft will go out to our adjoining municipalities, the Jenkentown School District, and the state and county planning authorities for review for a 45-day open comment period. Additionally, that draft has already been put on the borough website, and so we encourage the public to take a look at it, and there's a feedback option on the website. So we really want to hear the public's feedback on that draft. Additionally, two hard copies will be on file, on hand, rather, at the library for review. So, let's go with that. Couple other highlights. Town square, holiday festivities, the tree lighting's coming up on December 2nd and the menorah lighting on 13th. At our BZNR meeting, Manager Locke updated us on four new businesses coming into town. So thank you, Manager Locke, for your continued efforts to assist new businesses in Jenkentown as well. And our property maintenance and fire inspection program is moving along steadily as well. And I want to recognize Byron Marshall Lynch for his focused, engaged work to make that happen.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Do we need to make a motion to move that forward?
Oh, great, we're going to do that, yeah. Can we do that at this point in time?
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to move the 2035 comprehensive plan draft forward to make it available to the Abington and Cheltenham municipalities, our state and county planning authorities, and Jenkentown School District for review.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I guess it wasn't on the agenda again yet.
Okay. So since it was not on our printed agenda, we'll open this up for comments from citizens. And I wanted to just acknowledge that I see Laurie Durkin sitting here, and I so want to thank you for your work on the Jenkentown 2035 Plan. It was real, it's a wonderful plan, and we appreciate the work that you've done co-chairing the steering committee. Any other comments or questions? All right. There's a motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to public safety, Council Whitney.
Yes, ma'am. The report's in your packet, and we have one item on the agenda this evening. I had some discussion over the last few weeks, months, but I don't want to allow that to go unaccounted for. Do you ask for any questions?
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you. We'll skip over public works. I do expect Council Connors to be here, so maybe we'll wait until he arrives. Jenkentown School District, Council McLaughlin.
We're at with Dr. Tannen earlier in the month, and something that came up, I want to thank Cal and George for helping with the school had an issue about flowers on the new ADA grant, just making sure they were secure, there's issues of insecurity with them, a potential student. They just asked us, and so we've been doing a good job of trying to figure out how we can make recommendations within about how to stabilize that situation. And we did talk a little bit about the bonfire. She was, she expressed her sensitivity to everyone's concerns regarding the alarm that the bonfire created. She said that she's going to continue to have conversations with the community at large about the placement or the actual existence of the bonfire waiting for, if that was in place in the spring. So that conversation will be revisited in the spring. Right now, there's some other issues regarding budget in particular that they want to be responsive to first. And she also said that she will do her best in guiding that, leading that charge to make sure that everyone, all residents concerned are held. So we're aware there's one area that sits close, kind of most closely adjacent to the current location, but there are also other homes that potentially could be affected. So she just wants to have a balanced approach to revisiting where the placement of the student, or to make sure that's a part of the conversation. So we talked about that a bit. And then the other thing that we talked about, she gave me a tour of the Nest. So we, as taxpayers, we all, many of our children are going to be using the library, we all paid for it. So I encourage you guys, everyone in the community, to go and visit the Nest, the new library for high school. It's definitely a point of pride for the high school, and I think for our community as well. It's very well done. The money, I think, was, is visibly well-spent, and so I think that it's a resource that we should all be aware of, so I encourage you guys to check it out. And the last thing we talked about was just continued concerns about how to pose a budget with the state. Money is kind of inflex and uncertain. The idea of how we're going to fund our schools is one that we should all be concerned with. And so she just, she reiterated, we discussed our support as a borough council, on trying to find ways of generating new revenue for the school district, and being mindful that their concerns are ours as well.
Thank you for holding on to that and keeping our collective concerns up front. Any questions or comments? All right. Jenkentown Community Alliance.
I have no work to do.
All right. Multi-municipal group, Council Golden.
Thank you. Couple of quick things. One is, there is a DVRPC breaking ground workshop, and they seem to really want to get turnout because they keep sending emails and it's not until March. So I expect the next one to say, you know, last chance to register, it'll be December. The other thing that I think is really exciting is that Counselor McLaughlin went to the Building One America conference in Minnesota. In fact, she served on a panel there, and so I think there's a lot of interesting stuff happening. So if you have questions about that, I mean, part of the things we were talking about earlier in terms of being an accessible community, being open, and the ability to recreate inner ring suburbs so that they are not tax-challenged, and the tax effort is not for the people who live there.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. I will reiterate the invitation that has been sent to Jenkentown Borough Council from the Montgomery County Boroughs Association. There's a holiday party December 14th, and we are invited to attend, and I believe neither George nor I can attend. So if there is someone on council who would love to step forward, that would be great to have Jenkentown represented. Moving on to Public Works Department, Jim Riggins.
How you guys doing tonight? Your report is in the packet on Dropbox. A couple of things I want to highlight. Over the month of October, we did some preparing for the winter. We got all storage, we got all the brine tanks up, storage, manufacturing, and the distribution. We changed both tanks, we changed both tanks motors. We changed both motors for both tanks, so we are ready to go for the winter time. Probably we're still going to all that places. I think we attended two different places before we complete this month. I think we got about two or three more throughout the rest of the, throughout the rest of the year, and around us up in the air. I also put a spreadsheet for the Verizon poll list, the removal of Verizon polls to keep up, so you guys can keep up as well as us. If you've got any questions about that, you can give me a call. I'm in constant, I'm in constant communication with Verizon, trying to get going with restoration with people, but I'm on top of that. Anything else you guys want to ask, I'm open to answer.
Any questions or comments?
The tree looks good.
It'll win there.
It's good now. Work in progress. And I want to thank you for monitoring the removal of the holes. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Among other things, I noticed in your report, there are a lot of really important, you know, sort of thorny problems that you take care of every day. I don't know, I'm sure individual people recognize your, and appreciate your work. And thank you, on the whole, for looking after things.
Well, quickly.
All right. We already had a report from Engineering. Cal, do you have anything more to add?
Not pertaining to my report, but if the manager has any updates he would like me input on, they will probably move ahead.
Thank you. Solicitor Kyl Kenny.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Our office has been working with George just on some advertising requirements, responsible brick and right to know. And then we have a matter for executive session, which I believe we've sent the memo on for to discuss more in depth with council.
I noticed something about the gaming control municipal option. Can you just speak to that briefly?
Sure. Our office forwarded to Mr. Locke the, related to, there's a new state law, this is saying, does the borough want within its premises various small games of chance, electronic games, things like that, that can be played at bars and other establishments? We also have an opportunity to go ahead and opt out of that. I believe Mr. Locke is scheduling that for the December meeting.
December 11th meeting.
Meeting, sorry.
Okay. Great.
Or resolution.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. Mayor Foley, do you have anything to report?
I do not have a report.
Okay. Chief DeValdo, thank you again for an excellent report on efficiency management preparedness. Really appreciate you doing that. Anything to add?
Just one thing, I'm proud of you. We were scheduled for our assessment for accreditation, November 18th. Unfortunately, there was a scheduling problem with the commission, and one of the assessors started rescheduling. And I'll keep you posted when that is.
Okay, thank you. All right. Manager Locke, a big report.
Good morning, President. I do have a few things I'd like to highlight. There's a written report in your packet. I could answer any questions on that that you might have. We are into holiday parking season. All meter parking is free on Wednesday after 4:00 and all weekend. We do that annually. I attended a DVRPC training session for the TCBI grant, which is opening up next year. It was very informative. We were one of the communities that weren't granted a grant last year, and this was a good opportunity to see the grants that were approved and how we can improve our application and hopefully get that money next time. We did just receive word that we were awarded the multimodal grant that we went in with Abington.
Excellent.
We went in conjunction with Abington, $1 million. There's two other grants in that series for the same project, and that's the intersection of Greenwood and Washington with the flooding and no sidewalks and traffic lights.
We miss Lake Washington.
Lake Washington, yeah.
Oh my gosh, today, as I was going through that intersection, there were students from Jenkentown High School, cross-country guys, running, standing on the tiniest little piece of concrete, and it just, it really gave my heart. I skipped a beat as I watched them wait for the light to change. It was, it's so dangerous. There is not room for pedestrians on that corner.
Yeah. The 2018 budget is on the border of business for permission to advertise it. We went through three public budget meetings, as well as several admin and finance committee meetings. We're able to reach council's goal of no tax millage increase for the tax levy this year. There isn't a recommended increase in solid waste collection. It's a contract that was awarded after the budget of 17, so the increase was not accounted for in that budget. So we used a unbalance to offset it. It was roughly $40,000 more than what we collected this year. This fee increase will cover it through the rest, make it solvent through the rest of the three-year period.
Okay.
And then the casino, that the solicitor mentioned, casino memo. And available for questions.
Any questions or comments from the manager's report?
Could you update us on the progress of the effort to get some striping across York Road, at the intersection of Summit and York Road, where the curb cuts are?
Yes, on December 18th at 10:30 a.m., we're meeting with PennDOT out there. Council Soltizziak, Farrell, Panko, and I'm not sure if Counselor Whitney has signed on to that yet or not, but PennDOT is meeting us down there. I invited the chief to come down.
And purpose of that is just to convince them that we need to have striping done, or so of course?
I don't know. We...
We feel it's very dangerous.
We feel it would be dangerous to put the striping across, but we need to, hopefully our traffic engineer will be there.
The traffic engineers too, I'm sorry, I forgot.
I think it's more to reevaluate also the curb cuts they put in, and their reasoning for putting them in.
Our stance is now that it's dangerous to start that and curb cuts go away, because I remember that we were excited when the curb cuts were put in, thinking we'd have a proper crosswalk there.
If we could get a signalized crosswalk, I think we'd all be ecstatic.
Right, right.
But I think they told us, no, they just, they won't put a crosswalk there.
They won't, they won't stripe it?
They won't signal.
They might stripe it, but they'll signal, which that's the condition we think would be dangerous, is telling people it's okay to cross, but without a light to stop traffic. That's what we think would be dangerous.
And our stance is that we're, there's no hope for the signalization, so we're just asking them to undo what's been done.
Well, I think everything's, I'm sorry, I mean, I think everything's on the table. When we get that, it'd be, it'd be wonderful if they put up the flashing lights and install it. They can't use the curb cuts there without marking the pavement, so they're kind of in flux on that. I think they realized when we started writing letters to them of concern, that they stopped at that. I noticed they striped the other two further away. So I think the, the idea is to let them see it, first off, because it's very dangerous.
It is.
And if they're not going to put up flashing lights, it's my opinion that council would like to not see it there. I mean, people are using them. There was somebody on council, saw somebody come out of the theater, an older couple, and they went to the curb cut because it's there, and they crossed right there, and they were moving really slow.
So that was me, the gentleman who was using a walker.
Yes, yes.
It took him about two minutes to get across the street.
Oh my gosh.
This was 10 o'clock at night. Does it make sense for us to put barrels in front of those curb cuts so people aren't encouraged to cross in a prime state?
We have to come up with a solution. If we went out there, not even...
If you can, we can confirm if you need anything from PennDOT. But yeah, it's not, it's not a bad idea, since you're concerned with safety. It may be a good idea to block it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, we went out there with this exec representative from PennDOT, asking for some pedestrian crossing signalization. And they refused to put it there because of its location. And so now they've put curb cuts in encouraging that, so I really just want to revisit that corner with Rand and say, what changed over that period of time, and how do you think this is safe now?
Right, let's move forward and back.
There's no way PennDOT can say this is, this is safe.
But take it far enough forward into a safe.
They need to come up with a plan to make this safe for us. And so I think this meeting is really just to present this out there, say what, why, what was your intention putting this here? What's your plan going forward? Because this is not acceptable to us.
Okay. Great, thank you for the update.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just thank everyone for all your work on the budget. That was no easy task.
I'm gonna, before we move on to the order of business, I'm just gonna take a quick look at the public works report and see, is there anyone who was, attended that meeting who might want to list up a highlight on that? Manager Locke, is there anything you want to draw attention to? I think we may have, we've probably covered most of those things.
Yes, we have. The only other thing is the dump truck that was put under, that's on the order of business.
Yeah. All right. Very good. So moving now to the order of business. Council Whitney.
Yes, adoption of fire department training standards. Motion, make a motion to adopt training standards set forth in the focus fire services assessment and strategic plan, reviewed by BFIS.
All right. Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? Did you want to make a comment about that relative to your committee? Did you want to make a comment about that relative to your committee?
Well, we were, you know, very briefly, basically, we've been working on standards in this strategic plan more or less for quite some time, in fact, before I got back up council. And I think this is an important step. We need this. So I would appreciate everyone's support.
All right. All right, there's a motion on the floor with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Resolution number, Vice President Bunker, it looks like you have the whole rest of the list there.
You got one at the very end.
Okay, I got one at the end.
You got your phone back.
Right ahead.
All right, get ready, everybody, this is going to be a wild ride. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-9 regarding the disposition of records listed in Exhibit A. You'll remember that we adopted a records retention policy in compliance with state guidelines and this is just to do the annual purging of data records.
Do I hear a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right. This one's actually interesting. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-10, supporting the outlawing of bump stocks. This will make us the first municipality in Pennsylvania to have called upon the state to outlaw bump stocks in Pennsylvania.
Second. Any questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much and I thank you for your forward thinking.
Thank you. I will replace the...
Five more.
Only questions for the end.
Yeah, it was absolutely... A gadget that makes a weapon keep firing as long as you pull on it is supposed to be illegal. And just because it's outside the trigger mechanism instead of inside the trigger mechanism is nuts. Thank you very much. This one is the result of an enormous amount of work and I want to thank Finance Secretary Ware and Manager Locke for a stupendous amount of work that's gone into this. I make a motion to advertise the 2017 operating budget. This budget will be available for public review at the Borough Hall during normal business hours. That is a misprint. It should say 2018. Of course it should say 2018, but I read it in the judge.
And is the budget, there's a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Yes.
Comments? Is the, is the budget also available on our website?
It will be now that it's up for advertising.
Okay, so once we authorize the advertising, okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? Michael.
That was the same question I had. I would like to add that to the resolution that it will be available for public review at Borough Hall and also on the borough website.
All right, thank you.
That's a wonderful proposal.
And once it's adopted, I think we can put it into spirit.
All right, so just reviewing the motion, it's for a motion to advertise the 2018 operating budget, which will then be available for public review at Borough Hall during normal business hours and also on the borough's website. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. No tax increases. And if anybody wants me to talk about the trench fee increase, I think it's worth it.
George did a pretty good job, yeah.
I make a motion to advertise ordinance 2017-9, setting the tax levy for 2018. This is just sort of going along with the budget. The budget says how we're expended, this says what the mileage is for each.
All right. Do I hear a second? Second. Any questions or comments? Yes.
The comment is that the three in general, those two staff and Rick especially, did a great job in being managing the budget and the tax levy so that we do not have a tax increase issue.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Next one.
I make a motion to contract with E-Cole Corporation for the collection of delinquent Act 511 taxes. And the word delinquent should be added in there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Because they're even got a lot of money.
Yes.
Well, they, they get paid on contingency, so at least they won't cost us money if they get us nothing like the last ones.
Right. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
All right. I make a motion to set the parking fee at 25 cents per half hour.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just to run it out, but it's still, we're still cheaper than neighboring municipalities.
We are.
This one's exciting to me because it's part of keeping the tax system. I make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-11, authorize Jenkentown to enter into a lease purchase agreement with U.S. Bankport Government Leasing and Financing Incorporated. This is to replace the aging, falling apart dump truck and snowplow and lease it so we can paper it over time instead of having to come up with, what would that have costed? $60,000 or something? $85,000. Instead of having to cope with $85,000 more once we get it spread out.
Second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And before I make the next motion, I just want to say that, remind people that a lot of the work the council does to get these resolutions and ordinances forward happens in our committee. So it does seem as though we're just rubber stamping things, but we have already like hashed through all of the ins and outs of each resolution and motion in our committee meeting. So I'm just, you know, as we move forward.
Which are also open to the public.
Yes. All right, so I make a motion to approve the Montgomery, the community planning assistance contract between the borough of Jenkentown and the commissioners of Montgomery County. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
And this is for the Montgomery County Planning Commission work that we just witnessed and that work will continue. All right, any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Is there any new business that needs to come forward? All right, we will, let's see, we will, we do need to have an executive session to discuss matters of real estate and also matters of person that...
Are we going to take a vote on the request for funding tonight? Are we going to... Oh. The funding for...
Oh, yes.
Someone already checked it out.
Okay, yeah. What do you clarify the amount?
So, it was in the motion.
It's...
It was in the motion, not to exceed them at all.
Not to exceed, right, to exceed. Okay. So anyway, we're going to adjourn the regular business meeting and then enter into executive session and then we will reconvene into our regular session. So do I hear a motion to adjourn?